Monday, July the 16th, 2018. We have three items officially on our agenda tonight. And with the first item is the Herald Estates asset acquisition request. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Fearborn.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Holman.
It's been some time since we have spoken on this issue. For the record, I would like to announce that I am a homeowner within the Herald Estates Homeowners Association. Therefore, I am a de facto member. And upon advice of the city attorney, there is a possible pecuniary interest to me. Therefore, I will be recusing myself during this portion of the discussion this evening.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Fearborn.
Thank you, sir. I will turn it over to Mr. Crass. We'll be following essentially the exact same infrastructure acquisition format that we used for our last session. Mr. Crass will be talking to the technicals of it. Mr. Zer will be talking to the legal of it. And then we'll be turning it over to the HOA so you can make your presentation to the council.
Mr. Crass.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think we're going to reverse the order because the first few, first couple of steps in the adopted infrastructure policy regard, regards some legal issues and some authorities regarding the homeowners association. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Zer to discuss that.
Thank you, Mr. Crass. Mr. Fearborn, Mayor. Happy to provide some updated input with regard to this. You all have received the packet of information. And the background of this is simply the acceptance of the sanitary lift station and forced main sewer provisions for the Herald Estates Association. They are currently maintaining that and have since their creation. As part of the process that we originally instituted with regard to private infrastructure acceptance, the city adopted a policy on city acceptance of private infrastructure. That policy was utilized the last go around when we accepted streets and curbs. It outlines a four-step process for acceptance of private infrastructure such as the sanitary sewer infrastructure. I'm going to cover the first couple of sections of that. Basically, the first section is a requirement that the association be able to provide authority for the transfer of the ownership rights. The second one is to make a formal application. The third requirement in the process is an evaluation by the city to confirm the sanitary or the infrastructure meets the qualifying factors for acceptance. And the fourth is a preparation of a resolution for acceptance of that if instructed to do so by the council. With regard to the association's authority to transfer control and ownership of this sanitary sewer infrastructure, the association was originally bound by a set of declaration of covenants, conditions, and restrictions which indicated within their terms that they would be maintaining this sanitary sewer infrastructure. They have amended their original declarations of covenants, conditions, and restrictions so as to adopt a second amendment that was recorded on, oh, two months ago on the 11th. And within its terms, it specifically notes that they would have the ability to either continue managing it or in the alternative, based upon mutual agreement with the city, to convey that control of the, of the infrastructure over to the city until such time as the infrastructure would be replaced by gravity sewer. The proposed amendment also goes on to indicate that the board is authorized to convey to the city the ownership of the lift station and all rights associated with that lift station. And it goes on for one final section in order to indicate that representatives from the association are authorized to impose a special assessment against its members in order to cover some of the financial costs in order to bring it up to the standards that the city would require. That amendment again was recorded with, I'm sorry, approved by seventy-seven point six percent of the members of the association, signed by each of them, approved by the Board of Directors, and then recorded with the Cass County Recorder of Deeds Office on May 11th, 2018. That gets passed the first section. Oh, and then we also have been provided with minutes from the association's meetings whereby they approved the process and the transition. So that satisfies the first requirement as to whether or not there is authority to transfer the ownership rights in this infrastructure to the city. Legal is satisfied that they have complied with the requirements necessary for that. The second is making a formal application. With regard to the formal application, you all have heard from the Herald Estates Board of Directors before. I had identified their formal application as basically being September 15th of 2017 when they made their first presentation to the city council during a work session regarding the current needs and requirements of their lift station and their request the city consider taking on that as part of the city's infrastructure improvements. As part of the process, we are also required under the third requirement of the policy adopted by the city to do an evaluation as to the qualifying factors or whether it meets our minimum standards for acceptance as infrastructure. That really gets into the realm of Mr. Crass. And based upon that, I'd go ahead and hand this over to him and let you provide, let him provide a little bit of background on what they identified. And then I anticipate it's going to come back to me in order to discuss how the association would like to be able to address that and the improvements that will be required for that. So with that, I pass it over to Mr. Crass.
Thank you, Mr. Zer. There are two improvements that we identified that need to be made to the lift station. The first being that auxiliary power needs to be supplied. And that is typically in the form of, and in this case, the form of a diesel generator. And we estimate the cost of that installation to be approximately thirty-five thousand dollars. The second is that it needs to be, needs to be able to communicate with our SCADA system. That's the system that we use and the computer that we use to monitor all of our mechanical systems, our pump stations such as at Kentucky or Owen Good or any of our other lift stations. It allows us to know the condition of the, whether the pumps are operating, whether there's any mechanical issues, what the flow rates are through the, through the pumps. We've, also have a quote from our contractor for that in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars. So a total, total improvement package of approximately seventy thousand dollars needs to be made in order to, for this to meet our, our standards to the point where it would be accepted as infra, our infrastructure. Third component was we were concerned because of the age of the lift station, what the condition of it was. Having discussions with the Herald Estates Homes Association, they've recently made some repairs to the lift station. And also, they use the same contractor as we do. So at this point mechanically, the, the station is in an acceptable condition but for the two previous things that I've discussed. With that, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Crass. With the identified generator and additional SCADA system information, we were able to go back to representatives of the Herald Estates Association. And as part of that, they are presenting this evening, I believe they will be presenting a proposal to pay for approximately thirty-eight thousand, no, not approximately, to pay thirty-eight thousand dollars towards those infrastructure improvements. As part of the agreement that we have drafted, we have also incorporated an assignment of their special assessment. So they would be doing this as a special assessment against their members. Each member or each property would end up paying one thousand and eighty dollars over a period of time on eighteen dollar per month increments included within their monthly water bill. The assignment would be from the association over to the city, giving the city the authority to be able to collect those funds as part of the water bill since it's being imposed by the association. So that is the, the manner for collection purposes. If the council is inclined to, to proceed forward with regard to this acceptance, staff will prepare the necessary resolution. I'm happy to answer questions, but that concludes my portion of the presentation as well.
Thank you, Mr. Zer. Do you have anything to add to that? I would ask if anybody has any questions, Mr. Zer or Mr. Crass at this time before we move on to the Herald Estates HOA presentation. Hearing none? We'll go ahead and move on to that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Zer and Mr. Kraus. That was pretty much half my presentation. So, this will be quick then. My name is Matthew Gibber. I'm the president of the Herald Estates HOA Homeowners Association. This is Ron Grant, Jay Renfro, and Jim Morales, all board members. So today, we're coming here to talk to you guys about the acquisition of the lift station for Herald Estates. If I can get this to work. Herald Estates is, consists of thirty-five homes. It was constructed in early 2001 to 2004. And at the time, we, the only option was to develop the neighborhood was to install a sewer lift station since there was no infrastructure on the northern watershed at that time. At the time, the developer had told the homeowners that when development ensued in the north, that gravity sewer would be implemented at that time. Nobody anticipated that there wouldn't be any growth for eighteen years. We had a lot of economic hardships in the last ten, fifteen years that have, I guess, stifled the, the growth in that direction. So here we are today. Many of the residents are now retired and on fixed incomes. I came on, moved into the neighborhood two years ago. And we had a completely newly elected board at that time. And somehow, I was elected president, being the new guy, in 2016. So, no one in the neighborhood is in the sewer business and nor are we experts in its operation, which is why we're asking you guys for your help today. We've been working on this with staff for the last two years and have come on, you know, come together on a resolution that I think is acceptable to the city and to the residents of Herald Estates. This is just kind of an aerial view to show you the layout of the neighborhood. And then encircled there is the lift station itself in relation to the neighborhood. As you can see, we're a small neighborhood. And that's one of the things we've got working against us is that we are a small neighborhood. So we don't have a lot of funds. And as you guys know, that the maintenance, there's a lot of maintenance involved with lift stations. And it's really my, you know, it's, you know, it was our initiative to ask the city to turn this over so that we don't have to manage it anymore. And we'd also like to, you know, spend, you know, our HOA dues on things, you know, such as improving the front entrance to the neighborhood and other things that enhance the cosmetics of the neighborhood and make it more attractive. Mr. Kraus has kind of given you a rundown on the lift station. So it is eighteen years old. In preparation of turning the station over, over the last two years, we've spent approximately eleven thousand five hundred in repairs and upgrades, including a full rebuild on primary pump, two new vacuum pumps, new solenoids, new alternators, new hoses, and many other miscellaneous items along with quarterly PM services that also included an annual pit clean out. The station has two overflow tanks providing an estimated five to six days of protection in the event of a failure or a power outage. And to our knowledge from, from the homeowners, we've never had a power outage that exceeded twenty-four hours. So I guess there was never really a, a concern with the, you know, with the power outage situation. So, and it's currently being maintained by Douglas Pump. So the proposal we'd like to put in front of you guys today is thirty-eight thousand for the transfer of ownership to the city. This number was derived for helping share in the cost of the expense of adding the SCADA system and the backup generator to the lift station. And Herald Estates would also ask that we have this thirty-eight thousand dollars assessed on our water bill over a period of sixty months. Cost per household approximately thousand eighty-five. So this is what I went, you know, we had the meeting with the board member or the, or the homeowners. And this is what we had come up with that most people were comfortable with. Some of those folks would like to just pay it off in full upfront and some wanted it put in payment. So there will be a mixture of both. And in conclusion, we want to keep Herald Estates a first-class neighborhood and help embrace the city of Raymore's vision of being a first-class city. So this would be one step toward that goal. So we would hope that the council will accept our offer and we can move forward.
Thank you. Any questions of the HOA? I think it's our understanding that there are other alternatives that have come to mind to, down the road, not this time, but that this is the most attractive way to move forward for us at this point. And I think I would probably be echoed by the members of the council, but we do wish to move forward with this project at this time. And then the subsequent ongoing potential plans for the city development would come into play at that time. So I think as far as a follow-on, we would probably have another work session about the additional information. Is that right, Mr. Fearborn? Or do you want to discuss that at this point?
I think it could be a two-pronged approach. I think the work session at which it would be brought up would more than likely be the first budget work session that we had. Because it would impact the budget, that would seem to be a logical time to insert a discussion on how we want to exactly proceed forward with this beyond, if the council approves the actual asset acquisition, then there are alternatives to just continuing with the lift station. And it would fit very nicely in with next year's budget talks.
Okay. All right. Anybody have anything? Mr. Townsend?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to the homeowners association for attending tonight and the brief. I wanted to hear the brief first, and if I can, had a question to staff on this infrastructure acquisition. This is the second one we've done, proposing. And I'm just curious, refresh my memory on how the repayment plan for the previous version. I understand this one's going to be via the water bill. I just want to make-
This will be in the water bill? The previous version calls for, I'm sorry, sir.
Go ahead.
The, the previous version calls for an initial payment of sixty-eight thousand dollars by the Morningview Homeowners Association on September 1st, followed by ten years. We bill them each August 15th for a payment sometime in September.
And that, that's what I, I assumed. I was trying to go back through my notes and, and confirm that. But I appreciate that, Mr. Fearborn. So to that question, or to that point, how are we as a city tracking these individual water bill collections? Seeing how there wasn't a one-hundred percent agreement by the vote of the homeowners' special assessment, is it the residents that's being assessed this or is it the resident?
Thank you. I'm happy to answer that. The way the drafting of the assignment agreement states is that the monthly charge will be applied by the city of Raymore. And it will end when each property has paid a total of one thousand eighty dollars or one, or the amount of the special assessment for each property. So it will be applicable to each one of those individual properties, passing along from one homeowner to another homeowner in the event that there's a transition or conveyance in ownership.
Okay. Excellent. And so our, our, our utility office is capable of tracking, you know, the collection, whether it be paid upfront or over time, collection?
Exactly. There would simply be very, very similar to the static charge for solid waste pickup. There would be a third line on these water bills that called for repayment, I'm sorry, on these sewer bills that would call for repayment of the amount if the finance office received a one-time payment. They would simply apply the one-time payment. It's, it is unfortunately a small neighborhood, so very, very easy to track and finance.
Understood. And then because it wasn't a unanimous vote, for those, whether it was absence at the time of the vote or there are those actual residents who don't agree with this, is that rate being applied to, that rate just being computed based on the full thirty-five homes or just on those who voted in favor of it?
It'll be applied to all of the association members. So the association has the authority to impose special assessments on itself by a vote of its membership. And that, that vote would not just apply to those individuals who are present at the time of the vote or who would agree upon it. It will be applied to the entirety of the subdivision. And they've got the authority under their declaration of covenants, conditions, and restrictions for those special assessments.
Okay. I believe I'm good. Thank you.
Ms. Abdul-Wahid.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had some questions too. And kind of finishing a question that fits in with Mr. Townsend's line of questioning. So if people don't pay that special assessment, will they have their water turned off?
Happy to answer that one. The assignment of the special assessment makes specific reference that the city would be able to collect using all of the methods and manners as the monthly water charges imposed. So we would be able to utilize whatever our normal process is for water service and water collections.
Okay. I had a few more questions, if that's okay. I was wondering if you wouldn't mind sharing, how much are your homeowners association dues?
They're three hundred and fifty dollars a year.
Three fifty a year? And having worked very closely with Morningview when we worked out our agreement with them, one of the things that was so attractive for the city and Morningview about that agreement was that the entire expense was taken on by Morningview's neighborhood. And they're paying for ten years to pay that off. So I was just, because I wasn't involved with you guys and, and the work on this, I'm curious why you chose the dollar amounts that were chosen and why you're not paying back the full cost like the previous one that we did.
Part of the, the issue here is there's a little difference between a street and a sewer pump station. It's well-maintained. It could stand exactly where it is today and require nothing more than normal maintenance. The city wants and, and for their purposes to add a generator. We've never had a power outage. We are an underground system and we are connected to the same grid as, as Foxwoods Medical Facility. So we do get first preference on return of power. That's helpful in this situation, but does not negate the need to want a temporary or a backup power system. And as well as the SCADA system. The discussion has been for some time that the potential for going to gravity. So that equipment, if you chose to use that money for those two purposes would may just be for a very short period of time. That equipment will not be worn out at that point. Twenty years from now, that generator may be bad. Twenty years from now, that SCADA system might be outdated. But I don't think that was the vision when we talked about this long ago. It was more about how soon could gravity be fed. If you look at the picture we gave you and you notice what's going on back behind us, we expect that there will be development in a very short period of time. We're not privy to that, obviously. But that's been all part of the boil-up here in, in how we come to the number of saying, look, if we can pay half, you guys can use that money in any way you want. We're really not going to tell you how to do that. It would go a long ways to just maintenance, given the fact that we've darn near rebuilt the entire pump station over the last two years. So you're, you're basically getting a top-of-the-line pump station right now, other than the, the upgrades the city wants to put in for cautionary purposes. Did that answer your question?
Kind of. The, I mean, the money, the seventy thousand dollars will be spent right off the bat. Is that correct, Mr. Crass? We're going to make those upgrades to the station when we take it over. We're not just going to hold on to that money because-
That's correct.
So we're going to spend seventy thousand dollars on it right up front. And then over five years, you guys are going to pay back just over half of that.
Mr. Berenson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought about this quite a bit as well, too, having worked very closely with Morningview. The situations are a little different. However, you know, we, we held Morningview to the standard that they needed to pay, you know, roughly a hundred percent to bring everything up to city standards. The big difference I see here is perhaps the SCADA system. You know, we, we had Morningview bring all their streets and sidewalks and, you know, all the hard infrastructure up to standard. But the situation is a little bit different in the fact that they have, you know, we're putting the burden of putting in a SCADA system that, that isn't necessarily a requirement, but I see the benefit of it. But I think in lieu of doing this pump station, I think we should consider very carefully putting in a gravity-fed system. And I know that's probably what the second meeting will be about. I would support taking the money to build the generator, the thirty-eight thousand dollars, and putting that towards a gravity-feed system. That's just my, my two cents. So I, I support moving this forward, but with the understanding that we would take the money and, and use it for what I think is a much better system and a better investment of taxpayer dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Mr. Barber.
Yeah, just, Mr. Crass. If, if we did decide to go with the gravity-feed system, then we would not make the improvements to the current pump station. And my understanding is, the city is required to have a backup generator, but would have twelve months before, if they took it over before they'd have to install that. Is that a correct understanding?
If that's the direction we go, we can, we can look at some other alternatives rather than a permanent installation for, for the generator. We could, we could potentially look at, because we have a couple other lift stations for a short period of time, we could look and see if there's a potential for a trailer-mounted that then we could, then we could permanently install at one of the other, other locations. But for a short term, we could operate with a trailer-mounted generator.
Mr. Berenson.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Crass, if we did that as well, would we have to have the SCADA system? Say, for example, we decided to, to go forward with the gravity-feed system and, and we collected whatever funds we get here from, from these gentlemen, would we have to put that SCADA system in while the gravity feed's being installed? Or could we forego that?
We could look at a, we could look at a dialer-type system and where, but it, it is a little more manpower-intensive because you don't get the information that you need. You do need to, to respond, but for a short period of time, we could look at that as well.
If we were to buy a SCADA system, would we be able to reutilize that somewhere else? Or is that just money spent that, that we just kind of spent it and can't reuse it somewhere?
It's, it's site-specific.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Abdul-Wahid.
Just another quick question, again, kind of thinking back to my previous experience with, with a plan like this. One of the things that we learned from Morningview, they were very open and upfront about their finances and how much money they got from their residents and what they spent that money on. You guys mentioned that you preferred to spend your HOA dues to enhance the appearance of the neighborhood. Morningview let us know that they had some money that they had planned to spend on their streets. So they kind of, they spent quite a bit on their streets and curbs, but some of the money that they had for backup, you know, as they budgeted, they were able, they're able to give us on September 1st, you know, kind of as the upfront payment. And then they're paying over the next ten years. So I was just wondering, again, I'm, I'm looking for reasons why it seems like you're, you're only paying a small portion of this over five years, whereas the other deal we had was paying quite a larger portion over ten years and some money right off the bat to help with taking over that structure.
Sure, sure. The biggest thing we have working against us is we're thirty-five homes. So we don't have a lot of funding. You know, and then the other thing is it's a different type of infrastructure, like John said. There's benefits to owning your own streets. There's no benefits to owning your own sewer lift station. Right? So that's the last, the last thing, you know, and looking at it as a, a dollar perspective per household, Morningview is a much larger neighborhood. They have more funding. Am I not right on that?
Their HOA dues are a hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Times how many homes is the-
I mean, yes, they have more homes, but their dues are considerably less.
And they have a lot of-
Ours has only been that for two years, which was less than that.
Yeah, yeah. We did have to raise the dues to help fund the rebuild of the station and getting it ready for acquisition. So we, we've invested some money over the last couple of years in anticipation of the city taking it over, you know, per, per city requirements. So we did, we do have that money invested in it. And then this, you know, the other thing, you know, when you're talking about SCADA and a generator, that's, that's equipment that you guys will own even if the lift station's gone. Streets are different. You're, you're going to have to constantly maintain those. And there's nothing you're really getting back when it's done. So, you know, that equipment's yours. The lift station will be yours. So you're getting, you're getting an asset as well, not just streets. Does that make sense?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I, I think we're, we're kind of looking at it, in my mind, we're kind of apples and oranges here. I think when Morningview set their neighborhood up, they wanted to be separate from the city. They wanted to be controlled, their whole home system. When Herald Estates put this in, this was certainly not their developer's first choice to have a, a lift station. Nobody wants one of those. It was the only way the development could go in. It was the only way the development could go in, and I think, you know, Ms. Hubach said, we talked about this for two years, she said, "You know, we want to be a first-class city, we better act like a first-class city." And I don't think the city was in the condition or the position back when Harold Estates was put in, and obviously, I think we're looking at this, looking at this, this is Harold Estates right here, but the bigger picture is we have an opportunity to do something bigger than Harold Estates right here, and I think that's kind of, as we're looking down the road, I think we need to look at the big picture. So I support taking this over, and this won't be the end of this, we'll have some more discussions on it, but I support taking this over.
Thank you, sir. And I think everybody else is kind of in agreement that we should move forward with the acquisition at this time, the exception may be one. Is that all right? We'll go ahead and give a thumbs up to staff moving forward on it.
We have our direction, sir. We'll put it on an upcoming agenda. If we can't get it on Mondays, it'll be on the first Monday of July.
Okay. Of which month? August?
Of July, or of August, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Very much thanks.
All right, thank you very much.
For being here tonight. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Next item on our agenda is the Van Trust Real Estate presentation. I'll turn it over to Mr. Fearborn again.
Thank you, sir. I'll... Mr. Tab?
A brief pause while we switch people in seats here, sir. I'll turn it over to Mr. Tab.
Okay. Yes, thank you, Mr. Fearborn. Mr. Mayor, city council members, I want to first and foremost thank you for the opportunity to have this item right before you this evening, as I am incredibly excited and thrilled to welcome and introduce the gentleman sitting on the end of this table. As you might recall, during the Reimagine Raymore Strategic Planning Effort, one of the top economic development goals was to attract quality jobs to Raymore. These gentlemen at the end of the table are accomplishing that and then some, so I'm incredibly thrilled again and excited to welcome them to Raymore and to discuss the industrial project that we've been working so hard on for months and across multiple meetings, up on North Cass Business Park or the industrial section of The Good Ranch at North Cass Parkway and I-49. And so, without further ado, I will actually turn the floor over to Mr. Grant Harrison, who's been my principal contact at Van Trust Real Estate.
Thank you, Matt. My name is Grant Harrison on the development side with Van Trust Real Estate. This is Dave Harrison with Van Trust as well. Brett Lortz on to my left with Olson Engineering, and Dave Otis. Dave and I will kind of tag-team this and we'll give you a brief overview of who Van Trust is, and then we'll dive into the project. Very excited to be here. Have a lot still to do and figure out, but we're pushing towards an August seventeenth rezoning plat plan submittal, which hopefully would kick out a project entitlement towards the end of October. But with that, I'll turn it over to Dave real quick and then jump back in, so.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to meet tonight.
How's that? Better? Thanks. Thank you for the opportunity to meet tonight. As Grant said, I'm David Harrison, I'm president of Van Trust. Real brief history, we were formed in 2010 under the name Camus Real Estate. For twenty years prior to that, I've been involved in real estate in the Kansas City area from a development as well as brokerage standpoint and the greater MSA of Kansas City. We're a full-service development firm. We're headquartered in Kansas City. We've got offices in Phoenix, Dallas, Jacksonville, and Columbus, Ohio. Since 2010, we've done more than $2 billion worth of development. On another slide, you'll see we've got another billion kind of in the pipeline, and our pipeline is we've started something, it's just not finished yet. We are a privately-held company, and we're a family company. We're the family company of the Van Tiles. If you remember Van Chevrolet, our patriarch, our original partner was Cecil Van Tile, he passed away in 2012. Larry Van Tile is our chairman, and that family owns everything we do. We do a lot of corporate headquarters, suburban office, we do some boutique infill projects, do a lot of industrial, a lot of multifamily, and then just a mix of hospitality, a little bit of retail, and some land. We are the development side, we develop on behalf of the family, and we either hold it for a long period of time, or in this last cycle, we have sold a portion of our portfolio as it's been developed. But we're excited to be here. We've got some slides a little later that give you a flavor of a few of the projects, but this is kind of, this is the cowboy math we use. We've done 2.3 billion of product. Like I mentioned, we've got a little over 1.1 million, billion in the pipeline. That includes sixteen million square feet of industrial, 3.3 million square feet of office, couple thousand infill luxury apartments, and then we do a little acquisition of some existing properties. And so that's kind of our scoreboard up there. The next just shows kind of the areas that we deal with in the United States. I think right now we've got projects going in about twenty-two different cities, and they're all run out of the five offices, Kansas City being the corporate headquarters where overhead resides. I guess I'm overhead. So that's kind of our footprint, and if anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, or Grant can go right into the site, whatever you prefer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Glad to have you here. I have a question that might be slightly off-kilter, with such a large footprint across the nation. We know we have a jewel here, but what brought you to us?
I'm going to let Grant answer that.
Fair enough, sir. Thank you.
We've been able to do four or five industrial projects in Kansas City. Very competitive market right now. Access, the workforce, a willing land seller who can really be a partner with us, and a city that's pro-development really got our eye. I've been talking to Matt for months now, and the package he presented and the idea he presented fits our philosophy, and we like doing projects, we like industrial, and we think this could be a great spot and a part of Kansas City that really has been somewhat untapped on this newer, modern warehousing, so that's kind of our idea. So as you know, this is not the prettiest picture, but this is the southeast corner and the subject property, this is about 135 acres, right off 49 and North Cass Parkway, for your bearing. This is an ALTA survey that we've been working on, again, that's about 135 acres, which is what we're under contract and currently studying. What I'll show you here will be three different layouts, all of which fit within the 135 acres I described, and all within the proposed alignment of Dean Avenue. So we're trying to build a mousetrap that can accommodate several plans. We can be very flexible and react to the market as we see fit, but this current plan consists of four buildings and about a million six under roof. That first building on the far north or the left-hand page is about 500,000 square feet, and the next three are about 370 each. Again, these would be modern Class A warehouses, very flexible in terms of who and what can go inside. They could be carved up into multi-tenants, or they could be single-tenant facilities, but this is something we've seen across Kansas City and really across the nation, so great product. Light manufacturing, could be e-commerce, could be basic distribution, so very flexible Plan two, first two buildings are the same, but we've laid out a larger building, about a million square foot. We need to get product and land entitled and kind of ready to go to react to a lot of these builder suits that have popped up, and Kansas City is competing against Chicago and Dallas, and we see a lot of these bigger buildings, and there's not sites ready for that yet. So part of our hope is we can get this approved and work within these constraints and react accordingly, and that's why you'll see kind of a blend of plans. Third plan, two larger buildings, one still about a million square foot, and then another 700,000. But again, within these three concepts, we think we can react. Here are some prettier pictures. Our architecture firm or partners out of Dallas, Texas, they weren't able to make it tonight, but they'll be assisting us throughout the process and hopefully go in vertical one day. They're called Alliance Architecture, and these are just a few snapshots, really to show the articulation in the corners of these buildings. We're obviously open to color changes and working with the city and the staff to refine these, but wanted to present you something to give you some idea tonight, so. And all three concepts would ultimately feel the same, and we try to make this like a nice industrial park that all feels as one, so.
Grant went to Oklahoma State, so usually he shows them all bright orange.
The roofs are orange, you just can't see that. As Dave mentioned, we've done about 16 million square feet, whether completed or under development across the country. These are just a few of those examples, again, giving you kind of a flavor of what we can do and like to do. These range from 100,000 square-foot buildings up to a million plus. Again, all modern warehousing or light distribution. And then just to give you a real-life example, out of our Phoenix office, we've designed and built or are under construction almost 5 million square feet of space in North Vegas proper, and this was actually an old casino site that Larry Van Tile had bought. The casinos never made it this far north, and our team reacted and met the industrial requirement, and so it's fully built out today. There's two more under construction off-page, but again, gives you a site plan to product-type completion example.
All those buildings and those roofs you're seeing are all eighteen months old or less. It's all happened at once. This is the new version of a lot of the retail. Two of those are Amazon buildings, The Honest Company, Fanatics. There's so much e-commerce going out of here, it's crazy. Grant mentioned there's two other buildings that we're actually pouring right now, another Amazon, 855,000 square-foot building, and Sephora's West Coast Distribution.
To touch on our philosophy and getting this site teed up and ready for development, we had to extend utilities for about two years, get the sites graded, and then we were ready to react and meet the market, and that's what happened here, and we were very lucky to be able to do that. So hopefully we can replicate that model here, and we don't know yet if we will go spec and build, but again, we'd like to grade, work with the city, extend utilities in the road, and be as far down the road as possible to attract someone, so.
And I appreciate the conversation that was had before we came up. We did have sewers here, but we didn't have any water, and we didn't have any power, and it was separated by a railroad, so. That, the infrastructure conversations, whether it's sewer, whether it's anything, those are all critical components, so.
And lastly, really rough numbers and high level, again, between a million six and a million nine is what we presented. We would think this was about an 85 to 100 million dollar total project, total build-out valuation, and we typically carry .5 per thousand for employees, so it could be 800 to 950 employees, roughly, depending on who we see, but we think this could be a great project, a great project for everybody, so really looking forward to your feedback, and we'll be back here towards the end of August with the formal submittal, so.
Thank you, Grant. Anybody have any questions? Mr. Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, gentlemen, for expressing interest, and I echo some of the questions that Mr. Holman had, what drew you here, and it was excellent to hear that you're seeking interest in our area. I was just curious, I think you said earlier with regard to building to spec, did you have, two-part question. One, what industries, whether it be, you know, commerce, you know, Whole Foods, excuse me, not Whole Foods, but a food distributor, or, you know, what industries are you looking at to be warehousing out of here, and do you have already potential clients to fill the space?
We don't have any specifically identified at this point. We will hire a third-party brokerage firm who will help us market the project when appropriate. We really depend on the brokerage community to bring us those end-users, but this building will be very flexible, whether it's, again, light manufacturing, basic distribution, we could do food-grade potentially, but there's a long list of companies we could attract and still fit here. As Dave mentioned, we've done the Amazons of the world, we've done the Alpha Broders in Edwardsville, Kansas, we've done the Weg Electric, they do generators, soft goods, I mean, it's a large variety of people we could attract.
And is your proposal or your renderings had the four or three buildings, is your build-out plan market-driven, or you, meaning as the clients, you know, users present themselves, you'll build out, or are you planning to build out one of those versions completely?
Let me go back to that plan real quick, just to reference it. I think we'd like to work our way north to south and extend the public infrastructure as needed, and we'd want somebody to kind of kick off that first 500, if this is a plan we pursue. We could always react and do the first two buildings and still do a larger building on the far south, so this plan gives us max flexibility, we think, but we'd like somebody to help us kick it off, so that end-user in tow, whether it's half the building, all the building, or if the market changes and there's not as much product up as there is now, maybe we do that spec, but this would probably be the most current market plan out there right now, so.
The other thing that we've done, we've done this in South Dallas, we also did it in North Las Vegas, and we're underway right now with two buildings in Groveport or Columbus, Ohio, where we end up building a large building, and because this industry is a commodity business, the bigger you can make it, the better. So what we've done is when we've had a lead tenant, or in a couple markets, even a big spec, we've also built a smaller building just to get economies of scale. So it's kind of a function of, as Grant mentioned, we want to get the reaction of the market and see if we can get a lead, and then it kind of helps you determine what step two, three, and four are.
Excellent. Well, thank you. It's very exciting, I appreciate it, and if you know who your tenants will be, with this being Amazon Prime days, it'd be nice to just kind of walk down the street and pick it up. So again, excellent. Thank you for presenting tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Holman?
So just to recap, I think I understand this properly, but typically when people come to us, they have a specific project in mind. This is the front end, we're going to deal with the city, we're going to rezon if necessary, or we're going to do the site plan, preliminary plat, et cetera, and we're going to build a shopping center. Your business model sounds a little bit different. The front end, very similar, you're going to do all of that, but you actually react to market forces after that's done. That could be, wow, all of a sudden we had somebody jump in our lap and they want something now, and we're going to build and get them in there, or we may have somebody that takes the whole site, or we may... The back end is very fluid, I guess would be the best way to describe that, and you will change depending upon client reaction and demand and market forces. Is that a correct assessment?
That flexibility and nimbleness allows you to have the best mousetrap.
Great. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Barber.
Yeah, that kind of goes into my question, and obviously you guys are... Yeah, that kind of goes into my question, and obviously, you guys are experts in this. I can see what you've done in the past, and I would assume Amazon probably demands the most modern type of distribution or warehouse. We, when we looked at some with Matt, and one of the problems is there's a lot of different kind of warehouse, but there's not a lot of what these new companies demand, the higher ceilings, the, just, I don't know what they... There's a whole laundry list of things they desire, but I, I would assume you're looking at, that's what you're looking at here, one of the most modern, what we can, whatever you can think of and think down the road, that's what you're looking at for this project.
Correct. Yeah, whether it's an Amazon or any other XYZ company, for the longest time, but for the last eight years, we hadn't built new product, and there's a lot of tired space out there. And companies' requirements are changing, whether it's the clear height or just the, the quality of the buildings, which helps retain and attract employees, and the whole logistics model is changing. And again, we're trying to react to that the best we can. But these are very nice products, and this isn't the, the old warehousing. It's, it's changed a little bit, so.
When I got into the business in 81, a warehouse in Kansas City, the biggest one that was built spec was 300,000 square feet in the 80s. And I think it was the modern one because it was 24-foot clear. Today, virtually all the warehouses we're building, except for the smaller flex ones, are 36, 38, 40 feet. And we are now, for a mystery user, we're now looking at 60-foot clear with three levels of mezzanines in them, and as many robots as they have people in them. So what, what some of these warehouses are costing today are what a lot of office buildings cost. It's, it's changing so fast. So a building that was done in the 80s or even 90s with, with the clear height of 18 or 24 feet are antiquated.
Anyone else?
Thank you, gentlemen, for being here tonight. Mr. Otis, did you have anything to add? You're the landowner here.
Well, on behalf of Good Otis, I would just like to say how thrilled we are to have been so patient to have such a nice mouse land in our trap. This company, I think, they've done a lot more than industrial, and it's very impressive what they have done, and I believe their philosophies are similar to ours in that they're trying, they want to do what's best for the city and for the community. They, they look at things in that view rather than in, how can we get in, make some money, and get out? So we're excited.
We are as well. Thank you, sir. And thank you, gentlemen. Anyone not? Appreciate you being here. It's nice meeting you, and I look forward to seeing you on August 17th at Planning and Zoning. I'm on that, too.
Submittal, so we'll be there shortly after that, but...
Gotcha.
We'll be in the queue.
We look forward to it, and you'll, on all our... All our folks and how we do business, you'll, you'll see us in front of you. We don't have legal representation or, or consultants, it's, it's us, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have one quick thing, and it just popped up my head. Is the gentleman I made a mention earlier about, you know, being, painting a roof orange, seeing how this would be the largest, if this comes before, you know, planning and zoning, and not saying that it will, just as it goes through the process, this would be the largest rooftop, I believe, in Raymore, possibly? Having some sort of, something that's on the top of the building that says you are, as you're flying over, this is Raymore? Just a thought.
We can definitely look into it, and there's some pretty creative things we can do on those roofs.
Yes, just a thought.
As long as it's Raymore in orange, I'm...
All righty. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you all. Have a good evening. Our last item on our agenda tonight is the Quarterly Economic Development Update, so follow on to what we were just talking about. Mr. Tapp?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before your consideration here is the quarterly report of the second quarter of 2018. And for the sake of time, I won't go into any specifics right now. However, I'm happy to answer any questions or additional information you all might be seeking.
Anyone have any questions? Mr. Townsend, did you have one?
I did, one quick one. Looking at comparing to the last quarters, we had the one for The Good Ranch. There was a user that we were discussing with, about a 75,000, 85,000 square-foot user that now appears to be, did they shift areas they were considering, or...
So the entertainment user, the anchor user down at North Cass is that user. So they're evaluating both sites, both the Raymore Gateway, which is on 58 Highway, and then The Good Ranch. And I think they're a really good fit for what we're trying to achieve down there.
Okay, okay. And... The, what I...
Don't make me gavel you.
Yes.
Don't give everything away.
I'm talkative tonight, I guess. The, what's addressed here in The Good Ranch area, what's being considered, is this a, a version of what was proposed on the 150 Highway?
Similar, yes. So, so it's a truly integrated mixed-use retail-commercial development to where the youth sports side of the equation of use directly works with the retail commercial. So yeah, it's a very similar, yes, concept.
Okay.
Perhaps as a summary, it's, it's a good time to be in Raymore. We are incredibly busy, Mr. Fearborn, the mayor. We, we've got the industrial project, and then some, some major retail commercial. And then Goldenrod, the luxury apartment developer, will be coming to the P&amp;Z Commission and City Council close to the same time as the Van Trust gentlemen. So it's a very good time.
And I had a, a comment, sitting in a previous meeting and discussions with regard to your collective actions and the just actions in the area, seeing how what we're doing and what others are doing. Very exciting, very exciting for everybody involved on both sides of the aisle, if you want to call it that. Very exciting. I'll leave it at that, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Do you have a formal presentation to make? This is just it?
No, Mr. Mayor. Yes, for the sake of time.
All right. Anyone have anything else? There is an other listed on the agenda. Anybody have anything else to discuss that they'd like to talk about in a work session? If not, we do have a reason to go into executive session. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to go into executive session to discuss real estate acquisition matters as authorized by RSMO 610.021, subsection two.
I'll second the motion, sir.
Thank you, motion been made and seconded to move into executive session. Could please have the roll call? Yes. Councilman Townsend? Councilman Serko?
Yes.
Councilman Berenson?
Yes.
Councilman Abdellouin?
Yes.
Councilman Barber?
Yes.
Councilman Holman?
Yes.
Very good. We will now move into executive session, and once that's adjourned, our evening will be completed. Thank you.